You think that they're --
Tough crowd.
But they don't know who is saying what.
Good evening, welcome to the 11th meeting of the Milton Planning Board. Today is January 12, 2012, and I'm to remind you that this meeting is being both broadcast and recorded. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the chairman. I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, I'm a member of the board.
Phil Clark, planning director. Brian Lynch, member.
Peter Jackson.
Ed Duffy, member.
Thank you very much. Ed?
Madam Chair, if I could have a moment to say a few words about John P. Linehan.
Of course.
Thank you. I think as everybody knows, Mr. Linehan passed away on December 22. I'm reading from the obituary in the Milton Times in a few words from the annual report of 1983. John Linehan, 84, Milton died December 22, 2011. He was a graduate of Milton High School and Suffolk University. He later went back to Suffolk University for his Juris Doctorate, and later a Master of Law degrees from Northeastern University. He also attended Bentley College. He was an esteemed attorney, in fact, he was the head attorney at the law office of the Travelers Insurance Company of Boston for many years. He was a veteran of the World War II, of the Korean War, end of the Korean War. He remains a member of the Greatest Generation. Mr. Linehan was a former trustee and former board member of the Caroline Fuller Trust up on Canton Avenue. Milton Fuller Housing Corporation recently named a building in his honor for his many contributions to the Fuller Village. He is survived by his wife Mildred Gary Linehan, his children Carlene, Kathleen, Dean, and Charlene. He was the father of the late Christine Linehan. The funeral mass was celebrated in St. Agnes Church on December 22. He was buried in Milton Cemetery. And from the report of the Board of Selectmen for 1983, to the citizens of Milton, John P. Linehan retired from the board at the end of his 12th term as selectman. He has served the town as a town meeting member since 1959, and for nine years was a member of the planning board, including four years as chairman. He had been chairman of the Board of Selectmen for six years. His leadership and valuable experience will be greatly missed. In short, John served 21 consecutive years on the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, 10 of those years as chairman. In other words, every other year, somebody would say, "John can do it best of all," and they'd pass the gavel back to John. I have known John Linehan for many years because I too reside in East Milton. I attend St. Agnes Church, as did John and his lovely wife, Millie. We bawled together 40 years ago at Tony's Bowling Alley in the square. John was a simple and honest man, a gentleman without any false pride or pretense. But because he served 29 years ago, in an era without cable television, many in this town will not recognize the name or his contributions to the town. Let me suggest that John Linehan was a public servant without equal as to his dedication and selflessness. In the 349 years of the town of Milton, John P. Linehan was the town father of the highest order. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And Ed has requested, and I agree, that we have a short moment of silence for Mr. Linehan. Thank you very much. So we have several items in front of us, but before we get started, Mr. Connolly, you have a few words you wanted to say to us.
Good evening, Stephen Connolly, applicant 131 Elliott Street. And I'm here tonight to request a continuance to your next meeting, which would be, I believe, the 26th.
That's correct.
And I have two reasons for that. Number one is, I do not have the material that you requested from the last meeting ready.
Okay.
And secondly, I think we should bring in the arborist that took down the tree and have a discussion and maybe try to get a resolution on the FAR question.
Okay.
And I could have him here for the 26th.
Fair enough. And I believe --
Along with the traffic engineer.
Okay, I was going to do that, I just asked for the traffic engineer.
Right.
Okay. Now, as you know, the public hearing is scheduled for 7:00, so we do have to open it. If people are here, they may wish to speak, and they will be recognized to speak.
Okay.
And I'm also going to, I understand Alex met with you, so I'll have him report on that meeting.
Right.
So we will look forward to seeing you, unless you want to stay, on the 26th. We'll also put that --
Well, you probably should stay, just if people do have something to say, you might as well hear what they say, since it is a public hearing.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we should invite our arborist in for that same meeting, so that we can get points of view from both sides.
We would have to ask Mr. Connolly if he was willing to pay the additional fee. I'm sure our arborists would charge extra for that, but we could negotiate that over the next couple of weeks. But that's a good point, and Bill will be in contact with you to discuss that. As Alex said, you're more than welcome to stay, but in case you feel that you should have another appointment or whatever, and you need to leave, we'll put it on for the same time, at 7:00, on 1/26, when we continue that hearing.
I'll stay until the hearing is open and closed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, coming up for 6:40, is we are going to have a discussion with Polty Homes. Yes, what --
I get --
We were going to have a discussion coming up.
Yeah, two things.
Yes.
One, it's January 26th, at 7:00.
Yes.
Definitive time.
It will be, yes.
Are you going to do the rest of citizens speak?
Yes, I was forgetting, although we have somebody coming in at a specific time.
Well, we can do citizens.
All right, we can do citizens speak. In that case, are there any other citizens who wish to speak to us? Come on up.
Good evening.
I didn't see you back there, my apologies.
Peter Mullen, Gaskins Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Madam Chairlady, I came tonight because I saw on the agenda the proposal relating to the Henry's Building at 131 Elliott Street. As I understand it, there's not going to be a presentation tonight about that.
There will not be a presentation, but we will take comment, we will open the hearing and take comments.
You know, I think this proposal has been a matter pending before the planning board for an incredibly long time. I'm not sure of the time, but I think we're into our third year.
It's 18 months.
18 months since the proposal was first made?
Since the application was made.
The application was --
And there were some proceedings prior to that? It's spread out over three years, I think.
There had been a town, a change at town meeting in the zoning that was in part related to this, some years before that.
I think it's particularly hard for people in the neighborhood to keep up with what's going on. So many things have been postponed and postponed. I think that, at least with regard to some of the people that I've been talking with, that there's some frustration with that. I think there's also an incredible amount of frustration with regard to the condition of the building. I think it's an eyesore, and I think it's a danger in the neighborhood. I'm told that this big red X that's on the side of the building, in essence, means that it's dangerous for anybody to go in there, and if there was some kind of a fire or other emergency, that life would be in jeopardy to anybody entering that building. And I think if this development proposal can't be resolved soon, then the town is going to have to seriously think about having the building condemned and torn down. So that I would suggest to the applicant that really need to start moving on this thing, and that I think there's lots of concerns in the neighborhood with regard to the density of the proposals that have been made, the number of units, the positioning of the building. And I would expect that there's going to be a greater response from the neighborhood to the extent that things are before the board in the next month or so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, the next meeting --
Yes.
Should be a meeting that people in the neighborhood who want to --
I was just going to say, our 1/26 meeting will have the traffic report and the arborist report, and the new plans and sketches that we have requested, or have been requesting for some time, but will be ready then. And so that would be a very good meeting for people who wish to make comments, to come to.
Well, I certainly hope that all that can happen on the 26th. Based on history, that hasn't been the case. I think, you know, there will be an effort by people to be here and to learn about the proposals, and to comment and provide feedback. But, you know, it's hard for people to come and get to these meetings, particularly when something gets scheduled as it is tonight, and then it gets pushed off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll also say, because it's a good opportunity to do so, that we had been hoping to put the materials for this project on our website, and we've been without a clerk for some time, but we should have a clerk in time for the next meeting, and hopefully one of the priorities will be to get the drawings that have been submitted, and other materials that have been submitted online, so that people can view them before coming in. All right, next item on our agenda, I'd like to welcome Polty Homes to the table, if you'd all like to come up. And this is a meet and greet, an introduction of you to us and us to you.
That's great, that's just what we had in mind. So first of all, let me just do a short introduction of who's here, as there are four of us altogether. So myself, my name's Reed Blute, and I work with Polty Homes, represent Polty Homes of New England. And then I have Mark Marshtrani here, he also works with me at Polty Homes, and Mark Camo, who also works with me at Polty. And then we have our engineering representative from Bowler Engineering, Steve DeCoursey, and Steve is here tonight as well. So is it all right if we use this easel area here?
Absolutely.
For our work, I just want to make sure it was visible.
Just don't block, see, there's a camera up there.
Okay.
But let's see how it looks.
We'll see.
We might be able to move it forward, too, if necessary.
You might need that to move up. Mike, can you do that up?
You can do that?
Yeah.
Hi.
Yes, I brought another one, but this was here.
Mr. Blute, before you go, could you have the names and titles and so forth before we go, before you leave tonight?
Sure.
Or if you have cards and can leave them with Bill, whatever's easiest for all of you.
I'll hand over a card.
Get them off the door.
Give it to the secretary.
There we go, thanks. So I guess, first of all, introductions out of the way and in process, I just wanted to thank the board for giving us a few minutes to introduce ourselves, and also to give you the opportunity to ask questions. We're going to take, hopefully, three, four, five minutes, just to give a brief status update of where we are. And just for clarification, you know, it's not a, we haven't made any submissions yet, we haven't made any applications yet, this is just an initial kind of a conceptual, informal discussion, so we don't really have, there's a lot of things we haven't gotten to yet, but I can explain why and when our anticipated, you know, progress is and what our schedule is, we hope to be.
Great.
So, you know, by means of recap, the property that we're talking about is the Governor Stoughton Trust property, and we have a board here, just a little orientation of where it's located, I'm sure everyone is very familiar with it. And the reason that we're here tonight is because back in March of last year, there was a request for proposals, an RFP process, that took place on behalf of the town, the selectmen, or the trustees for the Governor Stoughton Trust that owns the land and has for many, many years. We responded to the RFP along with some other candidates, and ultimately, Polty Homes of New England was selected by the trustees to become the purchasers of the property at a point in the future. Along about the end of October of last year, last fall, we actually executed a purchase and sale agreement to effect that purchase, and there are some contingencies that have to be resolved prior to the actual closing and the transfer of the property. So that's a little bit off in the future, but one of the key criteria is the permitting and approvals, the entitlements of the site for use as single-family homes, which is our intention, Polty Homes' intention, to build single-family homes there. So we know that we need to come before your body here, we need to go through the normal processes and procedures, site plan approval process, and we're intending to do that in the near future. There are a couple more contingencies that we need to get out of the way before we can start this process, and two of them have to do with the, I'll just call it the, with the legal side of the transfer, the ownership, the trust, as it were. So one item, the first item of the two, is the approval of the purchase and sale agreement, the agreement of, for the trustees to sell the property, for Polty to buy the property. That agreement has to be approved by the Attorney General first, and then subsequent to that approval, assuming that does occur with no significant hiccups or delays, then it also needs to be approved by a court of competent jurisdiction, probate court perhaps, or something like that, since it is the disposition of an old, ancient will. So those two steps need to occur first, and they are in the early stages of the process. We're not quite sure, since it's out of our control, exactly how long that will take, so that the establishing is a really cohesive timeframe. It's a little premature for us to actually start, because we don't know when those two things will happen. But we're expecting that they will and do course, and as soon as that does happen, then we'll move into the, there's a study phase that we do on the ground, that's part of the purchase and sale agreement, which is on your website, and perhaps many of you have had a chance to read it. So the timelines, everything I'm saying is basically spelled out in there already. So once we get through that initial two stages of approval, we proceed with our site study, hazardous waste study, soil test, those types of engineering things. We'll commence with that, then we'll commence with the compilation of the conceptual plans, the preliminary plans, the submission plans to the board, the Conservation Commission, other boards in town that we need to go before in this process. So that is in the future, but the timeline, to the best, to the best of my knowledge here tonight, is going to be driven by those things needing to happen. Then we'll come before the board, we'll go through the process here with your board, and jumping back to the contract now and the actual purchase, the, that will occur after the, all the permits and approvals that are necessary to develop the land have been obtained. So we'll complete that step, probably a several meeting, several months process, and then once that is done, according to the contract, is a 30-day period to prepare the final documentation for the transfer, and then we'll have the closing and transfer, at which time the town gets the $5 million that we have agreed to pay for the property. The property itself will be subdivided, we know that as well also, which was part of our response to the RFP process. There's a section of the property now that's approximately four acres, that has existing buildings on it, that has the existing animal shelter on it. The concept is, for that approximately four-acre section will be retained by the town, by the trust, that's not going to be sold, and we know we need to go through a subdivision process to accomplish that, prior to the closing as well, which we would see as happening at the same time as our submission process. So once that subdivision process is concluded, and we get to the actual transfer of the property, approximately, the remaining approximately 30 acres would be the, in our paperwork, we call Apostle One and Apostle Two. Apostle Two would be the 30-acre apostle that would ultimately be transferred to Polty for a future single-family home subdivision development. You know, I'm going to ask our engineer to give us a brief overview in a second of the property. Right now, we have a conceptual plan, which is very similar to the plan that was in the response to the RFP, so should be no surprises to folks who've looked at that. I think that the target here, our concept, is to go forward under the Milton Cluster Zoning Bylaw. So we intend to adhere to the rules and regulations, the board's processes and procedures of subdivisions, and utilize the Cluster Zoning Bylaw to affect our proposed community here. Yes?
One thing is that the cluster development will be a special permit application, rather than a subdivision process.
Yes, thank you very much, that's right. I do understand that, and it will be a special permit, yes. So, you know, we'll be happy to answer any questions as you go, it's very informal, and we're really here to clarify and answer any questions we can tonight, with the understanding of the earliness in the process, which we are, there's a lot of, there's probably more questions that we don't have answers to than what we do, but we'll try our best. So I'll hand over to Steve, and he can run you through just a quick layout of what we've got here right now. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. My name is Steve DeCoursey, and I'm with Bowler Engineering. We're a civil engineering firm, and we're working on behalf of Polty Homes on this project. As Reed said, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to go through the existing conditions, the proposed improvements, if there are any questions I can answer, would be happy to do so. I think probably everybody is familiar with the property. It's just to the east of Unquity Road, and to the north is Governor Stoughton Lane. The property is about 34 acres in area, the zoning is Residence A. And as Reed mentioned, most of the site is undeveloped, except for a portion up in this area, which is the four acres that would be going back to the town.
Thirty acres.
That has some town-related facilities, a kennel, I believe, is up there at this point, and there are also a number of historical buildings that are on the property. And what we would propose would be to develop 30 of the 34 acres with 23 single-family lots. And as Reed again mentioned, we would be looking to do that under the Cluster Development section of the bylaws, so we know we're going to have issues to deal with relative to open space and all the different bulk requirements of that. We also know some of the lighter shaded areas on here, those are wetlands, we're aware they're out there, we know we're going to have to take those into account as we go forward with the process. We talked about giving the four acres, again, up in this area, back to the town. Access to the site would be from Unquity Road down in this area. There would be an emergency-only access road that would go off and eventually onto Governor Stoughton Lane, but that would not be a day-to-day access, that would only be an emergency access drive. Utilities for the site, we know that today there is sanitary sewer and water that's running through a portion of the site, and I believe it connects over to Countryside Lane. We plan on tying into those utilities. As I understand it, there's natural gas located in Governor Stoughton Lane, that would probably be where we'd be looking to come in with the gas. We've still got a lot of research to do, but, you know, we have some good idea of what potentially could be the solutions for utilities. As far as storm drainage and stormwater management go, we haven't really set out to do any design yet, but we know that we're going to have to meet all of the state and local requirements relative to stormwater quality, stormwater quantity, and that we'll have to come in with very detailed designs in subsequent meetings and have them reviewed and approved. So those are really the things that, you know, we have right now, and again, happy to answer any questions if we can.
Great, thank you very much. Brian?
Where is the existing dog pound now? I see Governor Stoughton Lane right here, is it?
I believe it's up in this area.
Down a little bit.
Yeah, it's, to your point. It shows on the site plan, too. It's a smaller scale, but you can see the buildings.
See that wetland in the back, right up against it.
There you go. I would imagine one of these buildings is the kennel facility. Dog pound's right here. Gotcha.
Any other questions, Pete? So you first.
And it's my understanding that you've reviewed the Cluster Zoning Bylaw, and you expect to comply with it?
We do.
Without looking for variances or?
It's our goal to, this is a byright application.
Okay. I just, from my own personal point of view, I'm very interested in seeing this happen. I think it can be a real enhancement to the town, and I think the process that's, the study process and the RFP process has been thorough, and we look forward to a quality development here. A couple of things that I'm going to be very interested in looking at is, I know the PNS references the most up-to-date materials and processes and things like that, and I'm very interested in sustainable design, both in the site planning and development and the building developments. I'll be interested in hearing how you're going to be looking at sustainability as part of this whole process. Another thing I'll be very interested, it is the public access to the open space created as part of this development, and, you know, hope that it's some, expect that it's some meaningful open space that can provide opportunities for the general public on the site. So those are just a couple of things that I look forward to discussing with you as you move forward.
Great, thank you.
Alex?
The site is spectacular, as you know. So obviously, as you create your development, taking account of the natural features, it will be important, and we hope you have a really good landscape architect as part of your team, because not only would it be good for the town, it'd be good for you, because I can see that this could be a really wonderful development.
Andy, did you have any questions?
At the moment, no.
Very much. One issue, of course, is making sure that we keep up with the timeline, knowing that it's uncertain at the moment, but that as we go forward, if you can all just make sure that you keep us updated as to where you are in the process, that would be extremely helpful. And are you going to be including a traffic study in your study of the site, as far as looking at?
I didn't think that the traffic impact is so minimal.
Okay.
And it's, so we were not intended to do that.
Okay, fair enough. But I understand you still need to get access to Unquity Road, is that correct? Okay.
That is one of the, another criteria that we need to work with the town to accomplish.
That's a state road.
Correct, yes.
Good luck.
Good.
Right, yes, we'll need it. We'll all need it.
One more thing, just be aware that the traffic in that area can be kind of interesting, depending on the time of day.
Right.
So you may or may not need a formal study, but you should keep an eye on it as far as your designs go. Alex, you had something?
I was going to suggest to the developer that we actually are very receptive, if you want to come in, or if you want to just call up Bill Clark or a member of the board, feel free to do so.
We have met, we've done, for example, this, earlier this week, I had a pre-application meeting with a lawyer on behalf of a client, so it is possible, if you have questions and you want to run by a member of the board, I'm usually available, or if I'm not, one of the other members is usually willing to fill in and have a pre-application with one of us and Bill Clark to discuss any concerns you might have as far as our requirements.
Well, thank you, that's very helpful. Appreciate it.
I hope you have, you intend to have an open community with public roads.
Public roads, yes, that is our intention, yes.
So that the open space can be accessed by the public? And perhaps some of the open space could, not just be an open field, but it could be pathways and so forth, but that'll be interesting to see how you do that.
It will be, we haven't got to that level yet, but...
I understand, yeah.
It's hard when you just have the conceptual plan to start off with, there's so many details that people sort of start filling in, so...
There's, my expectation, based what I know now, is that given, given all the criteria that we have to work around, I think that that plan that's underneath there is going to be pretty close to where we end up, frankly. There's not a lot of, you know, big flexibility, large-scale flexibility, but...
See, the public couldn't see that your head was in the way, so maybe they can show it now.
Yeah, so you did bring up, and we didn't complete this yet, because we're not quite sure where the access would come out, but it's just as an arrow right now, because we do understand that the property line is back from the road.
And you will at some point actually have access there.
We have to have access.
Right.
That's right. In order for it to go forward successfully, have to have access.
Any other questions?
The, thank you, Madam. The secondary, the emergency access?
Yes.
That'll be a permanent fixture, though, I would think. That'll be a permanent fixture though, I would think.
It will be permanent, but it will be for, you know, emergency vehicles only, so fire, police, ambulance, when they can't come in the other way, you know, the proverbial, whatever, tree falls out here, someone has a heart attack, or there's a house fire here and they can't get in. So to be distinguished from a secondary access that the residents go in and out and use on what they consider an emergency, not that. Public emergency vehicles.
And how about, is it too early for a sidewalk?
I think it's a little too early for a sidewalk, also cold and wet.
Also, I think we had a sidewalk, it was several years ago, but we...
Well, we can have another one in the summer, how about that?
Of course, exactly. The conditions may have changed since then.
Anything else? Any questions that you have for us?
When you suggested to keep you informed, what's the next process to do that?
You can email Bill, of course, always, and he can get you my email.
Great.
And you can email me directly as well.
Keep going. Well, thank you very much. If you have no other questions.
Thank you all.
We appreciate the time and, you know, we expect to see you later.
Great, we look forward to your application.
Working together. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the public hearing for 131 Elliott Street. And as we have already commented, we will be continuing this hearing to January 26th, but before we do that, Alex, I believe you had a meeting with Mr. Connolly this morning? Do you want to report?
I did, I met with Mr. Connolly and we discussed the zoning bylaw and its requirements. And I think that we're agreed that frontage along Central Avenue, including the corner at the tracks, needs to be a commercial space. And I encouraged a creative use for that. And there were a few suggestions made, but I think that it's, should be a, should be a good spot. Let's see, what else?
You discussed the FAR bonus and...
Oh, we did, yeah. We discussed the FAR bonus and that it really is time now to determine whether or not they're entitled to the bonus and that their arborist should come in and the board should, the board should determine whether or not a bonus is in order. And there was a question of what the setback for the parking area is under the zoning. And I'm going to look at the, look at the zoning and offer an opinion, my own opinion, as to what it is, what the zoning provides. And that's about it.
Fair enough. And then prior to the meeting, as we were waiting for the cameras to come up, we discussed the massing studies and what would be required from a visual perspective, reminding Mr. Connolly and him reminding us, the deliverables for our next meeting on the 26th will be the traffic study, which we have, but the traffic engineer will be there to discuss the traffic study with us. The arborist will be there to discuss the feasibility of preserving the tree, which of course is an important element in the FAR bonus discussion. We're going to be looking for site sections, we're going to be looking for visuals for, to go along with the written massing study that we received in our packets. One thing, Mr. Connolly, to remember is that we usually get our packets Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday evening, so anything for the meeting should be in those packets to make it easier for us to review them prior to the meeting. Oh, I'm getting the materials, we need the materials by January 20th in order to make that packet. Thank you. Let's see, site sections, elevations, we're going to wait until after we've seen the commercial and the discuss, after we've had the discussion of the FAR bonus. Am I missing anything that was on the list from the last time? Oh, and parking, you need, we need to determine the uses in order to make, of the commercial space, in order to make a determination of the parking. So that's the other item that's outstanding. Anything else that anybody can think of that was outstanding from those?
I saw that you showed Mr. Connolly the massing studies that were done for the Hill House site as kind of an example of...
Yes, I had three separate visuals. Thank you for reminding me. I'm not sure they're big enough to fit on camera. These were three separate projects that either have been or were, will be in front of us. This is the one from 36 Central and the...
An elevational study.
Yeah, an elevational study showing the relationship of the building to the surrounding commercial on this side and residential on that side. Then I also showed him, and this is a little bit more like the perspectives, drawings that we've already received, but not quite. This, if you remember, was to Adams Street, which is right here, and that was placed in to show its relationship to the other buildings, both in height and mass. And then this we received at our last meeting, it's a little too big to flip through, but basically there were several sets of studies in this packet. One, the first sort of five or so pages is of different ways of citing the building on the site using different massing and elevations.
So that's the kind of study that we'd like to see?
Yeah, actually, this was the original one we wanted to see, especially if you're going to be changing commercial and looking at the parking, is the different views of setting. We had talked of different ways of putting the building on the site and you have shifted it around a little bit, so seeing that would be helpful if there are other ways of citing the building, which you would have to look at anyway if there is a decision that the FAR bonus is not allowed, but you might just be thinking about that. The other thing that was shown in this particular set of drawings was the 360 view. If you remember where they put it on, and this is all probably in SketchUp, they put it in and then they showed us a view of the buildings all the way around, so you could see how they related to all of the different buildings in the area, again, in height and mass. And that would be a useful thing to be able to see. The site sections will also do that. We talked about having two site sections just before the meeting started. One would be looking from Central Avenue at Esprit de Vin and the new building here with the street in between and seeing how the site does. And then the other one is especially important to be looking at it from Elliott Street along the whole length of the building to see the different changes in grade and how the building is interacting, not just above ground, but underground. There was some question on the arrangement of the parking below ground and that site section would allow us to see that. So, anything else that's outstanding?
I think that on the massing, Mr. Connolly might find it productive to consult with you about how he's doing.
Oh, yeah, that would be great. If you have any questions, you have my email. I'm sorry, I couldn't meet at all this week. I have client deadlines like you would not believe, but Alex is our zoning expert anyway and I think you may have found it more useful to meet with him. But yes, please give me an email if you have any questions on the massing. And Bill may have a copy of that, of any of these studies. If you can't find it, I'll lend you mine and you can have a copy. Anything else I'm missing out? I think that was it from my list, so... Does anybody else wish to speak to 131 Central Avenue, Elliott Street? Central Elliott, 131 Elliott Street? Then if there's nobody else who wishes to speak, we will continue this hearing to 7:00 PM on January 26th. And we'll look forward to seeing you with all the materials and the experts.
And we'll allocate at least an hour and a half.
I think we're going to allocate the entire meeting to 131 Elliott Street, so...
Are you?
We don't have anything else on that agenda.
Other than the Town Planner's Report.
Then maybe you want to start a little earlier.
I'm sure we'll be able to fill the time with the Town Planner's Report and a couple of other things on the agenda. I think seven is nice. It gets people a chance to get home from work and, you know, possibly even have a bite to eat. All right, if nothing else, then the next item on our agenda is a discussion with Selectman Holm Harley. Welcome.
Welcome. How's everybody doing?
Good, happy to be here.
You, too? Boy, this is low. It feels strange to sit on this side of the table.
I know, I was going to say, I'm usually visiting you.
Want to sit here, I'll swap with you. No, this is fine, this is fine. So, how's everybody doing?
Great. Great.
So, before we get started on community preservation, I just want to say, this is going to be, could be an exciting year. I hope it's going to be an exciting year. You know, with the Pulte thing we just saw, the, you know, first cluster zone in the town, I'm really looking forward to that. I mean, it could be just so wonderful, you know, the trust could get their $5 million. I think there's going to be positive cash flow out of the net real estate transaction and quite a bit of open space and it could be some beautiful, beautiful landscaping. And it's, I think it's really neat.
It's going to be a very interesting project to come forward. And as you say, it's the first time we're using the Cluster bylaw, to my knowledge. I don't recall any other projects, so, yes.
If I may say, Alex and myself, we're the only two members that are on this board now, we crafted that bylaw.
And now you're finally getting...
My first year on the planning board, that was what, 22 years ago, Al?
Well, the problem we had with the Cluster bylaw is that we couldn't, we'd have to have created a PUD if we were going to offer a bonus for developers using Cluster, because the, the way it works is you've got the same number of units as if you did a conventional subdivision.
Right.
That is, there was no carrot for the...
There was no carrot available. We'll blame Hoyt Cousins for that.
So now...
And Ann Goglan, Ann was on the board, Ann, too.
I don't think you're allowed to blame Ann for anything, I'm sorry.
No, no.
But you did not come to talk to us about Cluster bylaw.
I did not come to talk about that. I came to talk about Community Preservation Act and...
Before we get started, can I just ask a question? Pulte in their presentation, you know, identified the steps with the AG's office and the courts that have to take place. Is there any sense of whether we're talking six months or three years to get through that process?
My understanding, and it's not firsthand knowledge, it's second or third-hand knowledge, is that it should be a reasonably fast track. I mean, anytime you deal with the courts, I mean, there are backlogs and we know there's going to be backlogs, but from what we hear, you know, eight to nine months, you know, perhaps a year, but no longer than that, I think that's the timeframe we're looking at, and I hope so. So like I said, I came to talk about the Community Preservation Act and before I even start that, I'd like to thank Pete and Ed last night. John Cronin is just starting to form a citizens campaign committee, if you will, for community preservation and Pete and Ed were nice enough to come to the meeting last night and participate, so it's great, thank you. So the Selectmen have decided to include an article on the annual town meeting to ask the town meeting to put the Community Preservation Act on the ballot for the November election, you know, which will be, you know, the presidential election. We're hoping that all goes through. We have a long, hard road, but just to explain a little bit what Community Preservation Act is, basically passage of the Community Preservation Act by the town would allow the town to collect a real estate tax surcharge, and let's be fair, it's a tax on all property owners in Milton. So that's, you know, whether residential or commercial, there would be, there would be exemptions for low-income families and there would be exemptions for moderate-income elderly. So, you know, an elderly person earning $70,000 or so a year would be exempt from the tax. We're looking at, the law allows us to put a tax of anywhere from a half a percent to 3%. So that's added on to your real estate tax bill, so that would be a half a percent of your current real estate tax bill or 3%. We're proposing one and a half percent, so kind of in the middle. That would be on the average house in Milton approximately $83 a year. If you project that $83 out with proposition two and a half increases over a 20-year period, it raises to about $143 a year, 20 years from now. So it's not a big, big number. I mean, you know, I'm always amazed, though, when you throw out any numbers, you know, to me it's not big, to somebody else it is and you have to appreciate their perspective as well. Best estimates, a one and a half percent surcharge would net the town about $726,000 a year in revenue just from the town side. There is also a state side, it's called the Community Preservation Trust Fund, which is, has been established and is, is a trust fund by the state that's used for matching funds. It's, it gets funded by transaction charges every time you have a transaction of the registered deed, so, you know, recording a title or transferring a deed or, you know, anything you might do with the registered deeds, there's a transaction fee that goes to fund this trust. In the beginning, Community Preservation Act's been around since the year 2000. In the beginning, it was 100% match, dollar for dollar. As more communities have gone on to the community preservation, you know, past community preservation, that number has gone down. Last year it was 26%, but it's still a 26% bonus that you're getting.
That's in the stock market.
That's in the stock market. You know, I mean, who wouldn't want to get a 26% return on their money? It's not bad. And there is legislation out there, and we're very hopeful that legislation's going to pass, that would set a floor of 75%. And it would do one other huge thing. The way the law is set up right now, community preservation money can be used to rehabilitate, but only rehabilitate things that were purchased with or created with community preservation funds. That's problematic for parks, because parks is, could be one of the big uses. As the law exists right now, you could not rehab an existing park. It would have to be a new park that was created with CPA funds. Then if it needed rehab later on down the road, you could use those funds. The new law will allow the rehab of any recreation space, even though it was not acquired with CPA funds. So basically, community preservation money can be used for, for distinct purposes. Community housing, historic preservation, open space, and park and recreation land. It all has to do with the land, basically. That's the way the law is written. And it can be used for a variety of activities, including acquisition, creation, preservation, promotion, and rehabilitation, depending upon the type of land it is. The thing it can't be used for is normal maintenance or operation of the property or town department. So, you know, in a nutshell, that's what it is. The 26% state match, based upon our estimates right now, would be about $190,000 a year, you know, if it were passed. So I'm excited about it. I think this is a way that we can provide for things in the town that are important to the town. They're important in that, you know, we're the number two community, small community in the country, in large part because of many of the things we have, open space, you know, certainly in large part because of the school system, which community preservation, you know, really doesn't do anything for. But, but a lot of the other things, the historic nature of the town, you know, the affordable housing in the town, those are all things that the Community Preservation Act could fund. And there is definitely, you know, in this era of proposition two and a half, not enough room in an operating budget to be able to do that. You know, Bill is coming in to talk to the Board of Selectmen about a local initiative program on, next week. And, you know, again, it's a wonderful concept, but, you know, right now, we just don't have any money to really fund any of that stuff with, and I think this would give us the opportunity to do that. And again, plus preserve open space, you know. People have asked me examples and, you know, it's, it's easier to say what we could have done with the money than it is to say what we will do with the money, but, you know, there are so many what we could haves. You know, in the meeting last night, you know, quite several of them came up. You know, clearly, you know, one thing that almost tore the town apart a year or so ago... You know, clearly, you know, one thing that almost tore the town apart a year or so ago was the temple issue. Had you had community preservation funds, could there have been a way to save the temple property and make open space? Maybe, maybe. Interesting concept. I mean, there's a lot of those. The Pulte, you know, proposal, you know, a third of that is gonna be open space. You know, could we entice Pulte to do something more with, you know, if we could use community preservation funds along with Pulte funds to do something with that space?
I'm assuming that CPA funds could be used on the historic buildings, on the remaining four parcels.
Yes, absolutely could. You know, one of the conversations we still have to have is kind of our master plan, if you will, with the selectmen, you know, and then we'll go through the rest of the vetting process, obviously, but as to what to do with those other four acres. Because really, right now, you know, I think each one of us has a vision, but I don't think we've collectively come together and said, "This is our vision." And yes, absolutely, it'd be wonderful if we could somehow retain the historic character of those buildings out there, so.
And we have so many historic buildings in town that the town could make grants to help out.
That's correct.
Whether it's nonprofits or even private homes, if they're of sufficient architectural and historic merit.
That's right, that's right. You know, and the other thing is, we have an awful lot of, you know, still have an awful lot of fairly large estates in this town that, some one of these days, are gonna come up for sale, and you never know what's gonna happen.
Right.
I mean, you know, is it important to try and preserve those, or at least try to, you know, preserve some of the open space to them? You know, it can be used for conservation purposes. We can acquire conservation easements, you know, across properties if people want to, you know, rather than donate to keep their open space, you know, we can actually, you know, give a property owner some money for a conservation easement. You know, somebody had mentioned last night that, you know, before Proposition 2.5, the town used to go around and acquire these small, little pieces of land just to kind of keep them as open space. Since Proposition 2.5, nothing's been acquired because there's been no money. Again, community preservation money, if, you know, if you care about this little plot of land that'll, you know, just keep the area a little more quaint than, you know, what it otherwise might be, you know, it might be nice.
It also allows us to do things like protect wildlife. It's interesting, we have so much forest land, but wildlife don't really care whether it's DCR or town or somebody's private property.
That's right.
And there's the ability to protect corridors between their various habitats is an important one.
That's right.
And that would allow us to, that funding would allow us to do that.
So basically, I need your help and support, you know, that's what I'm here for. And I'm visiting as many of the boards as I can to just say that, you know, if this thing's gonna get passed, 'cause it's an uphill battle, everybody's gonna be on board and support it and get out there and get the word out. The other thing that I'm excited about, sorry, on your agenda, is you're talking about a master plan.
We have that as an article on the annual town meeting.
Again, I think, hand-in-hand, community preservation and master plan, clearly, you know, one's the vision and the other one, you know, can be, you know, some of the funds to, you know, to make that vision come true, so. And we had talked about, Emily and myself had talked about earlier in this year, about a master plan. I'm a huge fan of it. You know, clearly, if the planning board does decide to go through, they'll have my support on the Board of Selectmen.
I'm coming to talk to you next week.
Great.
So, the Board of Selectmen, I'll let them know what the initiatives are and where we're going with that.
Wonderful.
It's fantastic. Yes, I see both as tools that the town can use for their planning processes, both as tools of vision, as you said, and also of implementation. And they will absolutely work together.
Right.
So, but I'd be interested to hear what the other members of the board say, having talked about it.
We'll find out.
Do you have any questions for Tom on his presentation with CPA?
I do. Tom, let us say the town approves it. Will there be a committee that will be the CPA committee that will execute the stuff and so forth?
The law requires that there be a five-person, a minimum five-person committee. And the people on that committee are a member of the Housing Authority, a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Historic Commission, a member of the Conservation Commission, I'm not sure if I've forgotten anybody.
There's an at-large, isn't there?
No, there's at-large, but this file, here it is. We got planning, housing, parks, is the one I forgot. So, there's representatives from each of the boards that deals with the land, basically, and the use of the land. There can be as many as you want beyond that, but those five are required. They're required to basically prepare a community preservation plan, if you will, to how we might use the money, and update that plan, you know, as needed. And they also make recommendations on how to spend the money. But town meeting has to approve any appropriation of the money, just the way they'd approve any other operating budget item.
Okay.
The only other thing is, there's a requirement that 10% of the funds go towards, or be stockpiled towards, community housing, 10% towards open space, and 10% historic. The other 70% of what you raise can be used on any one or any combination of all of those.
And the funds can build up until you're ready. You're not required to spend.
You're not required to spend them every year.
You just have to allocate them in portions, yes.
That's right, that's right. And the other thing I might wanna bring up, too, is the fact that, you know, in addition to the 26% state match, there are a lot, there's a lot of grant money out there right now that requires matching funds. And, you know, a lot of those grants, especially if they're land-type grants, are going to CPA communities because they have the money to put up the match. And we don't.
Right, we're losing out on grant funds. The other thing that you can do with that money is you can use them to pay bond payments, as I understand it.
You can leverage it.
So you can bond a larger project.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, absolutely. It's something that Milton's been needing as a tool for years. I mean, we've talked a little bit about the open space and the parks, but affordable housing is a key idea that we've struggled to implement.
Right.
And this would give us both planning and implementation funds in that respect.
That's right, that's right.
Very powerful land use. Any other questions for Tom?
I think, a comment. I know that the first, the next step, I guess, is gonna be to try to encourage the warrant committee to support the, you know, as the warrant article. So I think, you know, those of us who are in support of it, to talk to warrant committee members and encourage them to support it on the warrant, I think will be an important thing. My other comment is, I do a lot of work for municipalities, and almost exclusively, all the municipal work that comes out these days is funded with CPA, 'cause municipalities don't have other sorts of funds. And I do a lot of historic landscape restoration, open space planning and design work using CPA funds. And Milton is missing out, because for 12 years, our real estate fees at the registry have gone into the fund, and we haven't gotten anything out of it. It would be interesting if the registry or someone else could help us calculate how much Milton has contributed to the fund since the program started.
That would be interesting.
And, you know, so people could see how much that, you know, we've really missed out on in terms of opportunities.
Right.
So, I'm fully in support and encourage others in the community to get behind this effort.
I mean, clearly, you can't look back, but, you know, had we had community preservation since its inception, when there were 100% matches, even if you don't use $700,000 as a number, use, you know, $300,000 or $400,000 as a number, multiply it by that many years, it's well, well in excess of a million, it's probably well in excess of 2 million.
Alex, did you have a comment?
I think that, I remember that the reason the CPA went nowhere before is that the selectmen never got themselves...
That's probably correct.
...in order. And I think it's great that you've done that, and I think that it's only fair that the planning board vote tonight to support you.
I was going to ask, when you wanted to vote on it, if you wanted another meeting for further discussion, or if you were prepared to vote either way tonight.
No, I'm certainly in support of the town supporting this effort.
I'd like to vote tonight.
Okay.
I feel like I was already...
Do we have a motion? Bernie, are you happy to vote tonight?
Sure.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that we support, the planning board support adoption of the Community Preservation Act by the town.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Any other?
At any, at 3%? 1.5%?
Well, let's say at 1.5%.
1.5%, okay.
Just...
At what's being proposed by the selectmen.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Man of support.
Good job, Tom.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Looking forward to seeing you, all of you, next week.
Wonderful. Have a good meeting.
Like you.
You too. Just a couple more items on our agenda. I was going to say, one is the town planner's report, but since he's temporarily busy, I'll give you a quick report. I had the privilege of going to the warrant committee on Monday to discuss our budget with them, to discuss, to basically just introduce the articles we have. We have a surprise article, by the way. There's a third article that Bill suddenly realized we needed and had a good reason for realizing that we needed, but that he put in, and we hadn't had a chance to vote on it yet, 'cause it was sort of a last-minute thing. So, I've asked him to set the first, our first meeting in February as a public hearing for all of our articles. And Bill, I don't know...
Which meeting did you say?
The first meeting in February.
February 10th.
February 10th, thank you.
10th, yes.
So, it should be the public hearing for all of our zoning articles. And I wanted to ask, too, the master plan isn't technically a zoning article, but do you want to hold a public hearing on it? We're not required to, but I give you the option.
I would think we would.
Okay, so then let's hold a hearing on the, add that to the list of the other two articles. So we'll hold hearings on all three articles.
Okay.
Okay?
What money are we talking about?
What, what?
What money are we talking, with the master plan?
Oh, I'm doing some research on that for you. Foxborough has just issued an RFP, actually, the proposals were due this week for it. The RFP that they issued, which I'll give you a copy of, wasn't for a full master plan, but in the RFP, they put the amount of money for the master plan, and theirs was, they had $120,000 available for it. I would personally put an upper limit, I've got, I've got one, I would personally put an upper limit of $100,000, but I think, given the studies that we've had done already, we may be able to come less than that. So I gave the warrant committee guidance 100, I told them the Foxborough, 120. I want to have a look at the studies we've done so far and talk about that, not at our next meeting, because we've just devoted that to 131 Elliott, but the public hearings, what we've got, and also get some information out to you. I've got a copy of a completed Phase 1 master plan that Tom gave me from a town that has many similarities to Milton, although not all of them. And I want to give you the Foxborough RFP and a couple of other things. I actually had expected, up until about an hour before the meeting, that our meeting tonight would be devoted to another subject, which is why I don't have them for tonight, so, yes.
But couldn't we do just a supplement, rather than the full master plan, couldn't we do a supplement?
We could do, that's one of the things we need to talk about, is how we want to handle that. I told the warrant committee we could do a full update, or we, you know, one of the problems is that we have done a lot of planning so far, but they're all in multiple documents spread out over multiple years. So part of what we may want to do is get somebody to turn all of those multiple documents into a coherent whole, based on the master plan criteria in Section 81D. So one of the things we need to talk about is our approach. I would very much like to have a draft RFP by town meeting, so that people can see what the money would do. It's not that that would be the final draft, I don't think we'd have enough time to get a final draft for town meeting, but we could get a general draft up on the website to let people know what that is. So, I'm intending, over the next, you know, few meetings, to have us working on this and looking at things, so I'll get that material to you. And you'll be pleased to know I did find my master plan book. I had put it in a safe place. I know you were devastated.
Well, it does seem to me that we've, it's probably, the master plan should make some thoughtful suggestions. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be tricky to make thoughtful suggestions that involve material change. I mean, certainly, you can work around the edges, but if there are going to be thoughts on material change, then it's going to be important that we have a credible planner doing it, because...
Process, yes.
You know, it's not just throwing a lot of stuff together, there's a lot of judgment that's going to be necessary. And I guess that it probably won't be, it will be a recommendation that's not set in stone, but is, I mean, I, change is hard, and if you're recommending change, you're, it's going to be, it's going to be a very tricky process.
I'm glad you brought up the idea of change, because I actually had somebody call me on the phone and say, "Why are you doing a master plan? Milton's already built out, you don't need to do a master plan, we're not gonna change anything." And I said, "A master plan isn't necessarily about changing things. It may very well be that in going through the master plan, we reinforce many, if not all, of the land use decisions we've currently made. But a master plan looks at more than just the land use." For example, one example that I gave the warrant committee was, you know, the Board of Selectmen have just done the East Milton traffic study, and some of you may have heard at their meetings discussing whether or not they were going to try out a particular traffic pattern. And, you know, are they gonna close off Adams Street, are they gonna test out this pattern? And there was some discussion from some members, "Well, if you test this pattern out, what's going to be the knock-on effect into the rest of the town?" Now, one of the things that the master plan studies is traffic circulation, not just in one part of town, but in the entire town. And it may be that, an example of one of the things that we can do under 81D is we can take the East Milton parking study that's already been done, look at the traffic recommendations in it, and then with the master plan funds, we would have the money to further study that throughout the town. So if you do make changes here in this part, yeah, actually, it could have a knock-on effect in that part, but you wouldn't have been able to necessarily tell that from the more limited study of the East Milton traffic study. So that's just one example. It may, for example, reinforce the fact that there are many people who do not want the commercial areas that we have to expand outside of their boundaries. Well, that's fine, there may be some back and forth on that, but if the ultimate recommendation is that, it's not going to be simply a recommendation of, "No, we don't want them to expand." It may be a recommendation of, "Okay, great, don't have them expand, but this is how you can make them better." So these are the improvements that you can do within the current boundaries. Or it may say that adjusting the boundaries slightly might be useful. The point is, we can't say now where we are, this is what the master plan will say, but the process is important enough to go through. It may mean change, it may not.
It does mean change. If it doesn't mean change, it's a total...
Waste of time.
I mean, the business districts are a mess. To say that, to say that there's no change possible there because they're perfect is just ridiculous.
See, I agree. I don't, I think there is...
Okay, so there is definitely going to be change if we do a master plan, and you know...
But you don't know what that change is.
We don't know what the change is, but there is, if the planners can't come up with any suggested recommendations for change, they've got, you know, their brains are mush.
I can't wait to see the interview process. The other thing, and then I'll recognize you, Pete, is our master plan was last looked at as the executive summary in 1977, as on a formal basis. I'm not saying that the planning board hasn't in the intervening years looked at it, just on a formal documentary basis. That's when it was last looked at. The Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, the MAPC, Bank of Council, I was gonna say one or the other, MAPC has a Metro Future Plan that takes this whole area through 2030. Well, when you reply to grant applications, you're supposed to say whether or not your comprehensive plan... comprehensive plan is consistent with the planning area's comprehensive plan, and I don't know that it is, because we've never actually sat down and looked at it. It may very well be, but we don't know that. This would give us an opportunity to look at that. Pete, you had a question?
I think that an upset of $100,000 is totally inadequate to do a reasonable master planning effort. I think, you know, the master, community master plans that I've been involved in, to do a real credible effort with real, you know, public outreach and getting input and things like that, I think it's a two-year process and $200,000. $100,000 is not going to, in a meaningful way, look at issues of commercial area redevelopment or commercial area expansion and townwide traffic and, and those issues. The traffic study we did, that was $150,000 or 125, Bill, for East Milton? Something like that, 125 or 150. I caught you unaware.
You did. 134,000.
But it was in that-
134,000.
In, you know, to look at one small area of town and look at it in a very limited way, just traffic. I, I don't think $100,000 is sufficient to do a credible master plan townwide.
I actually disagree with that, because I also work in the field, and I've had a look at the proposals that I've seen come my way. I work for an urban planning firm, and I checked around with a couple of the people I know in the field, and they felt that $100,000 was actually quite reasonable. So, I think we should continue that discussion. Bring some RFPs in, continue the discussion, maybe see if we can pull in some other ideas from people as to funding. So, because, you know, one possibility is, certainly, the master plan that Tom gave me was a Phase One, and it could be phased out over several years. And that's a strategy we want to ask ourselves about, because your danger of, there's two ways of doing the phasing, is to get all the money as the appropriation at once, but simply phase the workout, or to phase the appropriations as well. Your only trouble with phasing the appropriations is that-
The dozen times.
What happens if Phase Two, they say, "No, no, no, we've had enough master planning. We don't want any more master planning." Your trouble with getting all the money upfront is that the firms can sit there and say, "Oh, you've got that much money. I'm going to bid my prices up a little bit." So, I think the strategy of how much we ask for and how we ask for it is very important. I agree, so. Anything else before I ask Bill for his report? Yes?
Just sort of along the lines of Pete. I mean, you, you recall, we had a, a couple of people come in and say, "I want to build some assisted living-"
Yes.
"-on my lot, because I've got a big lot, and I'd like to, I'd like to sell it for a lot of money, and I think I'd like to put an assisted living facility on it."
I'm not sure those were their exact words, but I understand your point.
But, it, it does seem to be, I mean, we hire a planner, and the planner just, this is just one thing, the planner has to get a rationale for citing these things-
Yes.
Because I think we're agreed that assisted live, a assisted living facility in town would be a good thing. It may be more than one, but the planner has to figure out how these things should be cited.
Right.
And that's not easy. That is change, but it's not easy change.
That's true, and in fact, we should all consider things like that, that have come before us in the last 10 years or so, that, because this can go into an RFP. I mean, as part of the RFP, we can say, "In addition to studying X, Y, and Z, we are interested in locating assisted living facilities in the town of Milton, and we would like this to be part of the plan and the discussion." So, think about things like that, then, that have come up, because this is the sort of thing that we want in there, is what other ideas, what land uses have we considered, where have we had difficulties in planning, that we would like our professional planner, outside consultant, not our inside professional planner, to have a look at on a master plan basis.
Well, the inside planner will be involved.
Of course he will be. He will be probably leading the whole thing. And I should add that there would be a master plan committee, made up of citizens from the town. So, we've certainly had, I've got a ton of emails at home from people who are interested in being on such a committee. I'm sure there will be more as this becomes more popular.
This is sort of, this is taken from the Citizens Committee for the Temple Shalom Development.
Some were on that committee and some were not. Some simply saw-
In any event, the Planning Board will be at the heart of this process.
Of course. It is, it's our responsibility under master general laws. We have to be, so.
I think, you know, the questionnaire that we sent out a few years ago-
Three this spring.
I think, you know, one approach would be for us to review and evaluate the information we got, and use that as part of the basis of drafting our RFP, or another would be that that would be a task of the master planner, to kind of start out by kind of evaluating that and see, you know, what directions it's pointing, because, you know, that was a great, good effort, and we got a lot of response, and I think we kind of owe the community, you know, somehow compiling and, and using that data as the basis for, for taking the next steps, since that's-
But I think that the, I think that the essay questions are, provide a lot of thoughtful information.
They do, as a matter of fact. Thank you very much.
They have to somehow be compiled and evaluated.
And once we get the compilation of that, this is going to be very useful.
Nice. That will be handed straight over to the consultants. No, we do have, I mean, there's the executive summary, there's the, there's the multiple choice. Both of those could easily feed into the, into the RFP, as far as areas that we need to target. The essay questions, actually, I'll have another look at, see what I can do for you, Alex. So, because I know you've been eager, you know, they are on file at the library. There are actually two of those at the library. Should you feel the need to-
MAPC, or is it MAPC that can provide some technical support?
Yes, they can.
Through the tri-town, or whatever it is, the regional council? There's some money, you know, maybe some interns?
Subregional.
Maybe the subregional can help us get a couple interns or do something to evaluate those things, because it, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff in there.
There's a lot of good stuff, and what's interesting-
We need to find a way of compiling.
Is it was done at the time that there had been several controversial projects in the, in the atmosphere, so there's a lot-
And now that there aren't any, it's a good time to plan.
Controversial projects. It's a good time to plan for other reasons. I mean, clearly, the, the economy isn't where we would all like to see it, but there are signs that it is picking up, and planning now for future upticks in the market, especially when, even during a town period, we've seen, down period, we've seen a lot of ANRs, and we've seen some possible subdivisions. Planning for an uptick in, in the market would be a really, really good idea. Bill, do you have a town planner's report for us?
I do.
Good.
You don't need one.
I don't need one?
You don't need one.
Wow.
Oh, I don't need one. You're right, I don't need one.
There was one article that I submitted under the Planning Board to the Selectmen, which was an update on the floodplain boundaries. If you go back and look at the current zoning, you'll see that there is a date for the firm maps of April 1978, and you'll also notice that there is a federal flood insurance report of the same date. This language that I submitted will remove that date. It will use the new digital firm maps, and-
We should probably explain what firm maps are for our viewers at home.
It's federal-
Insurance rate map.
Thank you. I knew-
It was on the tip of your tongue.
The, the maps that we have, that we use currently, look like GIS maps. GIS, meaning geographic information systems, but they're, they, they do not show individual houses. You have to scale and hope that you're getting it right. The new maps are digital and show every single house. We actually have all of the new firm maps on the town website, under the Engineering Department, under Stormwater, and they're, they're all there. You'll see every individual house in town.
So, people can go and look and see if they're in the flood zone or not?
See if they're in the flood zones.
Nice, that's excellent.
Actually, just from the other night at the Warrant Committee, when we gave this as a quick introduction, one of the members of the Warrant Committee is paying federal flood insurance, and he's in a zone C. There's no reason for him to be paying flood insurance.
Yeah, unless it gets flooded. Then it'll be insured.
It seems that everyone at this table knows who this guy is. He's on a rock, and there's not a chance he's going to flood. But anyways, we gave him the information. He'll now hopefully get out of National Flood Insurance. If we do not pass this, it will not keep those, it has the potential to not keep the existing policies in force. And it also goes back to the town's ability to go back after mitigation funds for the same, for flood events.
So, if we don't pass this, people's insurance could be at risk?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Not to mention the town's ability to get funds back from-
Mitigation. If you look at the, you look at what I gave you, there are two holes on dates. The state is expected to finalize the, the determination that the FEMA firm maps are the final copy, and that is expected to take place January 17th. If that takes place on January 17th by the state, that, that becomes effective six months later, so that would be July 17th. So, if we vote this in the beginning of May, it would be enforced for, for that July date. Also, the language that you have is pretty consistent, minus the first section and the definitions. Those are the only two sections that have changed. The rest of it-
Have changed from what?
Um, well-
What is currently in our zoning.
So, one and two are the only changes?
One and the lot, and the definitions.
Okay, so you put me-
And, I'm sorry, there's one more change, and that is the 3B and 3C. Those, those were specific addresses.
Okay, so 3B and C, but-
Those are updates, because there was no DCR.
So, this is the current stuff, sorry.
Now, who, who, you put this together?
Yep.
And who reviewed it?
I got, and definitions is six.
And all the definitions?
Yep, came from the state.
Okay. And, so we should read this thing.
So, we're proposing this as an amendment to the current, or replacement?
Replacement, replacing the current.
amend and update.
Well, no, just amend by substituting the following.
Right, and I have it, I have it-
You're not going to just say, "By putting in a new Section 3BC," you're going to say-
I can give you back the, the red line to what created this only-
Red line would be useful.
The, what I'm saying is that there are two ways of doing this. One is to amend whatever it is is there by changing Sections 1 and 2, and 3B and C, and adding the following definitions. Or, the other is by striking what we have and by substituting this entire thing.
I think that would be the easier to do, yes.
That's what I asked.
Okay.
In my language, to-
The Selectmen?
That's what I asked for.
Okay.
Okay, so you didn't provide us the language that-
I can give you back the-
The article that we submitted to the-
Yeah, the actual language of the article.
Yes.
Was that a "we" in quotes?
Okay, well, I think we should read this.
Okay, excellent, and then we can discuss it.
At next time.
Yeah, you should probably put-
Probably not next time.
Yeah. Hopefully not. Depends on how long.
Because that, you know, that's the slippery slope, Pete, when we say we're going to do the-
In February at our public hearing.
Right, and so that's the first time we'll discuss it or anything, is when we-
We can put it on the agenda, and should we have time after our all-meeting meeting with 131 Elliott, we can certainly take it up. So, Bill, can you make sure it goes on to our agenda for?
Yep.
Excellent. Anything else?
I had a bunch of days off during the holidays.
How were they? You don't get days off.
I know.
That's why I took them.
I know, the phone still rang. I've been assisting town council, town, several town councils, with the wind turbine appeal issues, paperwork for the, for the Planning Board. The Planning Board has a new administrative assistant, pending approval by the Selectmen next Thursday night.
You beat me to the punch, yes.
Should be starting January 23rd.
Right.
Who opened person?
Jean Peterson, who's currently with the Inspection Services. I'll leave the rest for you. I've been dealing with paperwork issues for the Planning Board, having lots of discussions with different developers on projects around town that just, they, sometimes these people come in and think it's going to take two minutes, and they turn it into half an hour, 45 minutes. I've been preparing for the affordable housing discussion with the Selectmen next week, dealing with the, some of the yule and rink issues for the Selectmen, and signs.
Here we go.
We'll be, we'll be changing some of that next.
How is that, a nice traffic pattern in East Milton working out?
Did they start that?
I thought they were going to block off Adams Street and back up traffic to the village.
No, I don't think that was their intent. I think they were going to block off Adams Street and test a new traffic pattern to see how it would work. I don't believe backing up traffic to Adams Street was part of the actual-
To the village.
I mean, to the village was the, the intent there.
Never part of my plan.
Has it actually been tested?
No.
I don't think it had been, so.
No. We weren't going to test it during the holidays, and now it's up to Mr. Lynch to figure out.
When the best time.
Mike, not him either.
Mike, too. Joe Lynch, when?
When would be appropriate.
Careful of the weather. We're cognizant of all of this.
Right, I knew you were. I just thought that was a useful transportation.
One question for the planner?
Yes.
17 Canton Ha.
Yes.
This old house is just waiting to, to start doing something. What are they doing?
I haven't a clue.
Okay, so, do they still intend to go forward, do you know?
Yes. I did hear that, I, last I heard, the building inspector was going to make them have a meeting with the public over the issue of, the preservation of the building is such that the building will disappear, and then it will be rebuilt. What is being saved is going to be the walls. They'll put them back up, and then they'll reframe them for today's standards, but the old part will be within that same frame. So, there's, you'll drive by, and there will be no house. You'll drive by, and the walls will start coming back to today's code.
What are they doing, using mirrors?
I thought they were going to check and move it over.
They're taking it off in sections. They're going to take it, they're going to dismantle the whole thing, and then they'll bring them back.
Oh, at the, are they taking it someplace?
They're actually going to take down the building in sections. They have to take off the different walls, number the walls, keep them in a pile. They'll move the-
Have a warehouse someplace, and, and the control climate and-
I don't know. They're, they're going to pour a new foundation, they'll move the existing flooring to the new foundation, and they'll put the walls back up, and then they'll start framing with the new materials.
That was what they told us they were going to do.
If you follow what the plan says, that's what's on the plan.
I thought they were going to pick up and move that, move, pick it up, build a-
Yeah, like they did at Milton Academy, yeah.
That's what they said.
Right.
Okay, so you're saying that we were tricked?
I think he's saying, "We, we did not look carefully enough at the plan," I believe is what he's saying.
Uh-huh.
What were you saying?
Look carefully at the plan.
Doesn't the Historical, Historical Commission come in here too, Bill?
I'm sorry?
Historical, Historical Commission?
Historical Commission has been following it.
What do they think?
I don't know. I, I started it with, "I don't know."
Okay. Speaking of Milton Academy, the January, Milton Academy, because I said, "Aren't they going to pick it up and move it the way they did with Milton Academy?"
Okay.
The house there. So, it is a good segue, if you were listening. The January 2012 issue of the AIA's magazine, our American Institute of Architects magazine features the Milton Academy science wing. features the Milton Academy science wing. I'll bring in a copy for you.
And do they, do they congratulate the planning board for having
They do not.
But they're not interfered in the process?
They did not actually mention the Milton planning board at all, to my great regret, but they did commend Milton Academy for having an excellent project, so, there you go, I pass that on to you. And I believe I saw something about 36 Central Avenue being in the Professional Builders magazine, so
Yes.
Yes, so we're getting, we're getting press.
Yep.
Yep. They did also did not mention the planning board sterling work on that one, I can't think why. All right, anything else?
No.
I see on the agenda, we've got 597 Randolph Avenue, but we're not
That was just a, it's a public hearing.
Right, calls have been made, and I did not get a return call.
This is, this is, this is somewhat similar to our Brush Hill Road experience, isn't
Yes, yes. I would inform the proponents of all the articles, which would actually just be them, since we're the proponents of the other two, that February 10th will be the public hearing. It might be a good idea to
February 10th?
Yeah, February 10th, yep.
So is it our intention, then, to move forward with an article?
It's on the morning now.
We, we submitted it.
We submitted it.
No, I, I mean, it seems to me that
Whatever happened
even if the current developer doesn't go forward, it would be, I think that's what we discussed, was it would be useful for a subsequent developer to have the option.
It, it gives the option for whoever, because at some point, that property will be sold, and it gives the option for whoever buys it to apply for that and be able to preserve the building in the open space. I think it's, I think it's a good plan to go forward.
Fantastic.
Pete, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.